Okay, we are good.
So, good morning. I'd like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee Meeting to order this morning on December the 29th at 11:00 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols. Please.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I'm Carrie Lucas, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org under People, under Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the role?
Hildegard Aguilano.
President.
Amy Costa. Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, and so we're going to get started. I'm going to ask, are you out of breath, Tom? I'm going to ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Did he go away? Can people hear me?
I can hear you, Pam.
I can.
Okay, good. So it sounds like Tom can't hear me. Okay, so Jolena, you can hear me just fine. We've already established that. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
It would be a pleasure. Everyone, if you'll place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Before we get started with the President's Report and the CEO Report, is there any issues around the order of the agenda? So I will just make a note to my colleagues that within the within the consent agenda, we have one one removal of our personnel, potential hires, and that is the position for payroll coordinator. That person has declined the position. So with that change, I'm going to move, I'm going to move to the CEO report first, and then I will follow with my own report. So, President Minion.
Thank you, President Haynes and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I hope that you are all having a wonderful holiday season, including time to rest and to recharge. Before getting started, I did want to note that you may recall from November's board meeting, a few clerical errors in a budget document were identified. And I wanted to close the loop to let you know that we've made the necessary updates and will post the edited presentation to our Board Doc site in short order. This time of year is marked by the opportunity to really reflect and to set goals for and direction as we look ahead to the new year. And at Calbright, we have a lot to be proud of with significant momentum that's propelling us into 2022. Our enrollment continues to grow. In October, we were at a little over 500. In November, we surpassed the 600 mark. And today, we have more than 740 students. If you may recall, the demographics are also holding strong to the population that we're designed to serve. Ninety-three percent of our students are 25 and older, reflecting our focus on serving adult learners, and more than half identify as either black or Latino. Our customer relationship management program, technology program, which transitioned out of its pilot phase in late summer, has nearly quintupled in size to more than 120 students today. And we're supporting that growth by also stepping up the way in which we reach out to students to explain the new program, to help them gain an understanding of the role that CRM technologies play in our knowledge economy, the opportunities that are out there. While every Calbright student can engage with their coursework at a pace that embraces their lives and their needs and the flexibility required to support them, the CRM program can be completed in roughly six months if a student commits significant time each week towards their progression through the curriculum. And earlier this month, we were able to celebrate the program's first cohort of graduates. Our progress is also palpable across the college and carrying through to each team. Today, we're seeking approval to fill six, yes, six positions, including the college's first ever Vice President of Engineering, who will lead the technical implementation of the college's technology infrastructure, everything from teaching and learning and the student experience to the internal systems, and will manage a growing team that will lay the foundation for our continued growth in the years ahead. In addition, given the need to expand our operational capabilities to support the college's growth, we're also seeking the board's approval on expanding our near-term capacity building required to accelerate our efforts to deliver that high-quality experience for our students and to meet the institutional goals that we've set out as we continue to expand hiring at the college into the new year. We also continue to move forward with the formal assembly and recognition of Calbright's local chapter of the California School Employees Association and are looking forward to taking the next steps to finalize that partnership and begin the collective bargaining process in early 2022. Complementing our personnel growth and the expansion of our operational capacity today, Calbright's marketing and communications team is seeking approval to build and launch a new website for the college that's very much a focus of our structural growth. It's our new front door to the world, and it will reflect who we are as a college, very much a student-centered institution designed around the needs and also the goals of adult learners across California, many of whom we know are working multiple jobs, managing the stress of unemployment, juggling childcare, and seeking a better future for themselves and for their families. And it will provide a platform, but also a backbone that can easily shift and meet Calbright's needs as we continue to evolve as an institution. As we ring in the new year, we're also prepared to hit the ground running in 2022, and I look forward to providing more updates in the months ahead on new program iterations and improvements to the student experience, as well as our continued focus on student persistence and success. Lastly, I'd like to take this opportunity to extend my heartfelt thanks to everyone on the team at Calbright for their hard work and dedication, and to wish everybody in our larger community a happy new year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll keep my remarks short. I just wanted to let at least my colleagues on the Executive Committee know that I was asked to provide holiday remarks to the all staff at Calbright. And it was a wonderful opportunity. I was asked to share my story, and I shared parts of my story that I really have not shared publicly. One of them was the job that I got and stayed in for 20 years was a job that I received as a result of a very short training program in which the airline, two airline large employers in the state of California and across the country were looking for reservationist. And I went, it was a private one, and it cost about $1,200 back when, a lot, a lot of years ago. And I had to borrow that money from my mother. It was money well spent. It was a loan, and I paid her back. It was an industry that was growing, and it was an industry that I was able to move into sort of at the bottom of that ladder and move up. I chose to move up through the employee side and the union side of things. And it was the, it actually ended up being the bridge to my master's degree at Harvard University. I share that because that is why I have the deep affinity toward the work that Calbright is doing. And so, again, I want to thank the Calbright employees, but I also want to thank my colleagues on the Executive Committee. This is extremely important work, and I could not, we could not be doing this work without each one of you. When we came on the Board of Governors, I don't think we anticipated the kind of work that was needed around Calbright, and you, all seven of us, but the six of you have been steadfast in your support of the work. You've asked critically important questions. You've made the path smoother in so many ways in terms of your expertise and your knowledge, and I cannot be more grateful to have you as colleagues and as board members on this committee, as well as on the Board of Governors. I continue to see the glass as half-full, and while there have been challenges in 2021, we have met those challenges. Calbright has met those challenges. The Executive Committee has met those challenges, and the Board of Governors has met those challenges as well. Today's agenda reflects the forward movement that we have been making all along and exemplifies the hard work that the Calbright staff has continued to rise to the level of excellence in making certain that we met the needs of standing up this college. And so I want to thank everyone for that, for the work that you're doing and the work that you will continue to do. That's the end of my report. In the meantime, why am I lost with my papers? Here they are. With that, we are going to, the board is going to move into closed session. We have two items on the closed session agenda. The first one is a conference with the labor negotiator, and the second is public employee discipline dismissal release. Before I leave, it shows that I'm supposed to ask for public comment. Am I supposed to ask for public comment on this? Or wait until afterwards?
No, before.
Okay, so is there any public comment on this? Item.
No, President Haynes, there is no public comment for this item.
Okay, then we're expected to return from closed session in approximately 45 minutes. Thank you. There is, okay, there is, on one of the personnel issues, there has been the removal of the payroll coordinator. That is the only change in the consent agenda. Are there any comments from our members? I don't, oh, I see Tom. Tom Epstein? You have your hand up, Tom.
Yeah, this isn't about that, but I think the recording started after you made your report out of the executive session, so maybe you should repeat that for the recording.
Okay, happy to do so. We have, the Executive Committee members have returned from closed session, and it has authorized Calbright to release an employee. And so I ask for, if there is any public comment.
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. So I will accept, there's no public comment, and there's no other comment, so I'm going to accept a motion and a a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move approval.
Can I get a second? Okay, so Grande moved, and Epstein second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Hildegard Aguilano.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you very much. We're now going to move into our action agenda, which the first item is 4.1, which is the professional services agreement for web-based, sorry, website redesign optimization and support. And we have Brendan O'Callaghan, who is our Vice VP of External Affairs, Marketing and Communication. Brendan?
Thank you, President Haynes and the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. So today, Calbright's marketing communications team is seeking approval to redesign the college's external-facing website, calbright.org, in partnership with Solid Digital. This is an exciting project, one that I'm very excited about, and one that is also critically important as Calbright continues to grow and expand our operations. So I, alongside my colleague Vance Hicken, who is our Director of Digital Strategy, are here to answer any questions you might have, and I thought it might be helpful to just provide a little bit more detail and context about, you know, our vision for this project. So Calbright's website, it's our front door to the world, so to speak, and as a student-centered institution, it's vital that our website reflects the ethos. That ethos and tells the story of who we are as a college and what our programs provide. And so we want to create a site that clearly and quickly articulates Calbright's programs and model, one that is focused on our students, both current and future, and meets them where they are. And I want to also just note a clerical item here in that in the sub-bullet under site design and deployments in the background document you received, I incorrectly noted that this project would begin December 16th. That was a clerical error, it was an oversight on my part as I was updating calendar items. Of course, we would begin following approval by the board and not before. And so, just why are we doing this? So at present, our website's design is inflexible, and there are structural limitations to it to make it not only difficult to administer, but also limit the kind of content we can place on our site and where that content goes. An interesting tidbit is that our web traffic is roughly 80% mobile. You know, cell phones, iPads, that kind of device. But our website is not fully optimized for this type of experience, especially in high-traffic information pages and the news content that will drive our long-term content marketing efforts. And our backend infrastructure requires oftentimes the expertise of web engineers to fix what should be simple issues or to make straightforward adjustments. So this is also critical in creating more opportunity for the MarCom's team to service our website, to free up the tech team to move forward with, you know, student portal, student-facing entities within Calbright, Calbright's tech infrastructure. So how long will this take? This is top priority for us, and we are expecting to get going ASAP next week, given that Friday is a holiday, but we will probably be in conversation with Solid Digital shortly after this meeting, if approved. And we would spend the first quarter of 2022 really focused on this, building the site, iterating, improving with anticipated launch in early spring, kind of that end of March or into April timeframe. Of course, as we get into it, we may learn additional things, but that's our general timeline. And while launching the site is a key part of this overall endeavor, we won't stop there. We'll have new programs launching throughout 2022 with corresponding marketing landing pages, drive interest and enrollment, and we'll want to continue to publish keyword-rich content in order to establish stronger visibility across search engines. It's critically important that our website connects with everything else that we do in the marketing apparatus, and the two play on one another and complement each other. And so because of that, that long tail end, if you look at the structure of the contract, we wanted to remain engaged with Solid Digital for an extended period of time. It's about 18 months, concluding in June of 2023. And this provides the capacity so that our internal team can remain focused on the student experience related to digital tools, and that Solid can really step in and work on the external-facing website. And so then, kind of lastly, is why Solid the right partner for us? And I want to start by answering that question by saying thank you to every person who, or every firm that submitted a proposal as part of this RFP process. The scoring was very competitive. Then Solid was selected for several reasons. They presented in their proposals, as well as in their interviews, a very well-fought-out approach and workflow for driving growth via web content and optimization of marketing campaigns. They also have demonstrated expertise in Elementor, which is the WordPress page building tool that has fueled our landing pages at present and which we intend to use going forward. And this is really big because what we want to do is create a platform that is serviceable not only right now, but a decade from now, one that's prepared to evolve with the college and to shift to meet those needs. And so Solid conveyed a clear understanding of our digital needs. And the selection committee, which was made up of members of the MarCom's team, as well as the technology teams, felt really comfortable with Solid's ability to maintain the site, add additional features and function after launch, provide ongoing advisory services, and train the in-house team for a straightforward handoff as we get to that end of the 18-month period. And the final component of this that we really appreciate, and I've alluded to this already, is is that Solid provided the ability to, if necessary, purchase additional maintenance hours, service hours with them so that we can, if needed, ramp up or ramp down on this project as we get into it and move forward, and as other competing needs arise that might lead to a shorter handoff or a longer handoff with the internal team. So with that, happy to answer any questions or discuss further. You're muted, Pam.
I want to have you hear me shuffle some papers. Jolena Grande, you have a question.
Thank you, President Haynes, and thank you, Brendan, and the rest of the team for the information that's presented. I noticed as one of the proposals, it involves the research and inclusion of the user groups in developing of our new website. Is there going to be a focused effort on reaching out to our students, faculty, and staff to engage them in how they see the website working and how they would like the functions to play out as we redesign?
Great question. Yeah, and the answer is yes, absolutely. So I would say that we initially have done some initial research on this. It was, and so we will build on that, but this is, I mean, everything that we do, you know, from the marketing side, marketing and communication side of things, I want to incorporate, you know, the voices and input from across the college. I think that's really important. I, you know, involve instructors and student-facing staff members, as well as our students, to understand, you know, how they engage with it, and also understand how prospective students engage with our web entities. And so that's, it will absolutely be part of our, you know, process here, our building process, and then also part of our improvement process as we get into it, you know, and will be part of that continued improvement, you know, going forward. But we will certainly be partnering with Solid to have direct meetings and conversations about the use of our website across the college.
Thank you.
Member Aguilano?
Thank you, President Haynes. My question is a little bit related to Jolena in the sense that the reasons why I visit the website are very different from the reasons why students and faculty visit the website. So when I look at the website, I'm, you know, getting what I want and leaving, but I'm also missing a significant portion of it, which I think is the backend part, where you log into the student sign-in portion and engage with the portals that people like me, passersby, don't get access to. So could you talk a little bit about how you plan on developing that portion and integrating the concierge aspect of really supporting the student along the entire trajectory, both digitally and with this high-touch in-person these high-touch in-person interventions, so to speak, that we are looking to deploy as well?
Yeah, absolutely. So I would say, so the calbright.org website is the external-facing site. You know, and so on it, there are, you know, kind of mandatory, as a public institution, you know, documents that we have up there, and so that would remain up there. It would look different, probably, and a little bit more in a cohesive manner. But things like our budget items and everything would still be on this website. But what we do want to do is transition it more to a student-centered entity, a current student and prospective student, so that when a prospective student hears about Calbright from their friends and Googles us, and they land on our homepage, they can immediately grasp, you know, who we are, what we do, what our programs are, and the proposition and opportunity associated with our programs. So the complementing that is our student portal, which is actually a separate digital entity for Calbright and part of our learning and instruction and student engagement component. And so we will absolutely be looking at our student portal so that the content on there complements what's on our website because, you know, it should all, it should all feel the same and feel similar for all of our students. But the student portal itself will be, one of the reasons that we're bringing in a third-party partner for this is so that our in-house team can really focus on the student portal, you know, under the, with, under the guidance of Ted Lie, you know, Pam Sanborn, and the other, and the members of the faculty to really work on that. So this project itself will predominantly focus on the external website itself.
Board member Epstein?
Yeah, I have a few questions. The first is, we had this big contract with Census, the marketing contract. I was curious, is that still operational? I saw that they were one of the bidders for this, and is, can you explain how the work they did or are still doing relates to this contract?
Yeah, so this is a separate component of this, and our contract with Census ends at the end of this calendar year, so it ends on Friday. And so what this is, is a forward-looking project. And so we will certainly build on what Census has done. They did a phenomenal job with research, for example, and they've done an incredible job creating assets graphics, you know, and kind of refining how we talk about Calbright. And so the goal for this project is to build on that with Solid Digital as the successful bidder as part of the RFP process. But we are, we are no longer, we won't be in contract with Census as of the end of 2021.
And then I had two specific questions. One is, I'm interested in the SEO part of this. I saw that it was mentioned. It seems, I'm particularly interested in how how we strategize on SEO vis-à-vis the for-profit colleges that are offering, you know, similar services.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Before you answer that question, I had, this could call me a neophyte over here. So there are terms, there are acronyms that I do not know. SEO was one of them. KPI was another one. So please, the whole, the whole word, the whole three words, please.
SEO, search engine optimization.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've learned, and as I, you know, people ask me, how do you, you know, talk about Calbright and such? I say, well, one of the, one of the interesting things is that we don't have, you know, 50 years of institutional data to look at. These are the messages that work. This is what resonates, and let's double down on that. So what we're doing is actively building out what that looks like. And paid search has been a highly effective mechanism for becoming on students' radar, on potential students' radars. And so we definitely want our website to connect with what our paid search marketing endeavors are. And then with SEO, Vance, do you want to jump in and talk a little bit about that, since it's really in your area of expertise?
Sure, Brendan. Thank you. I'd be glad to. And my first time speaking to President Haynes and to the members of the Executive Committee. Nice to be here. Yeah, with search engine optimization, this is a, like, the ultimate long-tail project. We have already off to a good start. Our team, you know, prior to our arrival, has been doing a lot of good blog content. But generally, you want to develop basically a footprint of highly relevant keyword-rich pages or posts on the web that, you know, are unique to us and elevate our best messaging and tell the kinds of stories that we're interested in, and in fact, are likely to be linked from elsewhere. It can't, you can't do It can't, you can't do it overnight. It's all, like I said, almost a never-ending project with content. And I think the bigger opportunity we've done initially, I would say, at the inception of the college, there was a lot of content around why is Calbright in existence? What problem are we trying to solve, right? Those, those pieces are always going to be rich terrain for us. The big opportunity is going to be storytelling around uniquely specific to our audiences, who we're trying to reach. And as they come in and have success while at Calbright and ultimately move on, get their certificates and move on to successes in their careers. That kind of content is what we need the most of, and it takes a lot of effort just to produce editorial work there. But also to package that from a technical and a visual standpoint, that's very friendly to search engines. So as Brendan mentioned, in addition to paid search, which is a paid, you know, marketing aspect, needs to work hand in hand with what we call organic search. When somebody searches for certificate programs free in California, we want to rate really high, generally speaking on that, and we want the articles to be interesting. We want them to be present first and to be interesting and meaningful to the prospective audience. So this whole category of SEO is, it is technical in nature to some extent where the infrastructure and the optimization of every page is concerned. But then it's a longer term, basically messaging and content production aspect to that gets more and better pages out there that will basically live indefinitely on the internet and finding any, any and all ways to link back to us on so many of these search terms.
So that's helpful, but are you, are you observing or researching what the for-profits are doing? Because I know they invest a lot of money, this kind of stuff, and how to kind of
Certainly.
position us in the same context with them?
Yeah, so like, no doubt, they'll have a lot of the same thinking and same approach. And, you know, if you see, if you observe them at the top of the search result, that's often a paid result where they're basically competitively bidding against us and others for those rich keywords. But there are also no question, basically authoring more and better content every day. And content is labor-intensive. It can be expensive if you want to make it expensive with high production value video and whatnot. But that's, that's us basically entering into that pool with all of the right arsenal. Where we know paid search has been successful for us to drive traffic and drive leads that have turned into, you know, basically student prospects and ultimately students enrolled. But yeah, like, we need to be out there competing on both the paid side and the organic side. And I would wager, like, that is exactly what the for-profits are assembled to do right now.
I'd add one thing, because we're never going to outbid on the paid search. Where we get to differentiate is on, is the sort of art and science of what is the content that's our, that's our generated content or leveraged content from other, you know, other party sources that give us a moment of distinction. And you heard Vance talk a little bit about that, right? Sort of like free certificates in California, community call, you know, just these kinds of things that actually differentiate us from the for-profit market. So it's about getting savvier on the content side and then being positioned from an infrastructure perspective to do that. So we will absolutely do and begin to do more and more of our own content generation. But the other part of that is, we can also get more creative about how we leverage and point content to us. And and that's what the setup is going to give us position to do.
And sorry, one last thing about embedded video. Are you guys going to be doing a lot of that? Because that, that, you know, at least what I've learned, that seems to be the most effective way to grab people's attention on a quick search.
Yeah. So so video is certainly part of our 2022 plan. I would say we actually have two, two videos that are running on social media right now about the new year and, you know, the, that make 2022 your best year. And so we are actively working on that kind of content. Content around telling our students stories, telling stories about our, you know, who we are at Calbright and embedding that into our site as well as, you know, into our external facing entities like, like social media, YouTube, where these things, you know, can live on their own outside of the the digital walls of calbright.org, so to speak.
And I'll just mention, we're, we're planning on sharing more with the board in January on, on some of those efforts on the, on the digital, on the digital front.
Thanks.
Are there other questions from board members? Okay, I do have just a really, I guess it's a quick question. So this is, this is basically about an 18-month contract, thereabouts.
Yes.
Okay. And there is some wiggle room in the, the contract amount. It's not to exceed $253,350.
Right.
So there's a, so there's a $36,000 sort of fudge room. And I would assume that is for any potential unforeseen, it's not a lot of money. So it's for the unforeseen. What is anticipated that may fall in that category?
Right. So so that 36,000 represents the, the purchase of two tranches of support hours of batches of 120 support hours.
Okay, I saw that within the contract. I wasn't quite sure if that was what, what that allocation may be for.
Yeah. So that's what is there a little wiggle room there as, you know, new priorities arise and such to be able to, you know, quickly capitalize on that and bring in solid, which will already have a good working understanding of of our website and then be able to to move quickly to, to, you know, complete any project associated with it. Yeah.
Okay. And then the, the other question, which I think was, it was answered, I just wanted to ensure when I, when I went through the present, the, the, the materials that was sent to us, I just want to make certain that within the body of the, of the work that solid digital will be doing, that what, that there is, and it is identified that what Calbright has as part of that package is internal staff that can do and manage the website, because that's critically important. And I really appreciate that there's some, there's some, there's some time to ensure that piece of it, but that piece for me is, is important. And then, then the other question, I see head shaking in the affirmative, so that's efficient for me. I want to also make certain that there was a, there was a statement that there's going to be some contact with public and internal stakeholders. So I'm assuming that public is extremely broad and potentially because we, we usually talk about also external stakeholders. And we don't always call them the public. So I want to make certain that those who need to be and brought into this process in terms of gleaning information that it's an inclusive process. I know what that member Grande mentioned, students, and I'm hoping that there's a, this is broken up in phases, four weeks, nine weeks. The four weeks is gathering, listening and gathering information. I'm hoping that 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 bridge has stops along the way to ensure that we're getting the insights of the, the, the users that we, one, the internal users, i.e. Calbright staff, but also the external, which I consider internal users, which is that, you know, 4 million Californians who could benefit from, from the Calbright experience. So I just, I want to make certain that the student voice is at the top of the list relative to its usability and its access points. And if there's any glitches that those can be incorporated along the way. The, I, I saw that there's, there's one week for launching, which means that perfection has to almost happen before that. Not after that, for, not after that last week, but prior to. And so I just want to make certain that all of the the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed to ensure a really good launch.
Absolutely. Yeah. And so we've already started mapping out our website currently so that we ensure that none of the important information that is on our website now is, is lost as part of this redesign. And we want to just carry it over into a new design. But yeah, absolutely. Our, we're a student-centered institution and student use and student voices will be the focal point of our planning and design for this site. Not only that, but we'll be able to see how users interact with it in the long term as well. And we'll be able to then, you know, say, okay, well, well, this, this page isn't, isn't acting as, as we had thought it would. And we'll change it, you know, and we will, we will, it'll be a continue, continued iterative process to improve. But absolutely laying the groundwork now, to your point, Pam, and ensure that President Haynes, to ensure that you know, all of the voices of Calbright, as well as, you know, prospective students, current students are included is, is critical and top priority.
In this regard too, I think it is important for us to embrace a little bit of a language shift because I think one of the things that is unique about what we do as a college is a predisposition and a continued movement towards a user-centered design approach. And what that essentially means is fundamentally different than, you know, sort of getting stakeholder feedback on, I used to do the, the FASF application work, right? The FASF simplification work, where there would be a once-a-year advisory committee and they would comment superficially on aspects of the websites or questions or things that could be altered. And then over in a corner somewhere, you know, certain decisions would be made about what was feasible and in different development timeframes. The, the process of user design as an approach is, is just fundamentally closer and more centric and in more continuous fashion to the folks who are going to be accessing, you know, the opportunity at Calbright. And so, you know, predisposing everything that we do from this from the programs that we do to the way that we show up externally through something like a website. All of those things have fidelity to that type of a design approach. And it's, it's, it's something that I'm very proud of in terms of what we're doing, but it's also something that's an essential condition of reaching and supporting the population and the community of learners that we're trying to to reach.
I appreciate that. I don't see any other hands up in terms of board members. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
So this is an action item. Can I get a motion to approve in a second?
I'll move to approve. Rawlings.
Second.
Rawlings moved and Epstein, second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Jolina Grande.
Hi.
Cam Haynes.
Hi.
And Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. And I really enjoyed going through what 62 pages of documents, but they were really great. Thanks. So the next item is 4.2. It is the second addendum to the professional services agreement for David M. Lewis Company. And we have Jeff Bell, who is the presenter on this item.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. For the David M. Lewis Agreement, what we have here is the second addendum for services by David M. Lewis Company. What you'll find is that we have utilized their services since last, since the beginning of this year for services on the director slash chief, chief. Excuse me. Through May 31st of 2022 is what we're suggesting to, to to additional agreement of $179,040. Now, their services started initially at an agreement amount of $75,000 and we had one additional addendum for their services prior to seeing you today. Which brought their services up to a total of $165,920. Their services have been essential for us in establishing our final expenditures through this fiscal year, finalizing our contract expenditures and continuing our contract services with them have helped us close the books and continue to provide our services through the, through the fiscal year. We've had challenge and have had two detailed cycles in recruiting for a director controller and are working diligently to fill that position. This is a position that we are currently contracting for while we do that. We recognize that this is an additional amount of resources for something of that nature, but we nonetheless feel like this is an important service for the college. And we recognize that this looks like an additional amount that seems larger than perhaps would otherwise be normal. But it is an important amount of services and we feel like for the amount of services that we are receiving, it is important investment for us as we find the appropriate detailed plan for who we are going to put into this position. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sorry, Member Grande.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Bell. I was just wondering, when this initially was executed as a $75,000 contract, was this a competitive bid that was with multiple potential contractors? And if so, how is it that we're now up to almost more than doubling, tripling, tripling, no, quadrupling the initial 75,000 with a total contract value that is now coming in at 300 and almost $350,000?
Yes, this is, this is something that we bid out for. It is my understanding that it was competitively bid. We are in this place now because the contract, this, this is, these are the resources that we need to spend for this contract, for the services rendered. To, I can tell you that for the services rendered, these are the resources that we need to spend for something of this nature because the services for something of, for, rather, for a, for a staff of this nature, it typically costs this much. This isn't something that's unusual. It's not something that we find what would be the right word for it. This isn't something that we would find out of the ordinary. And it is something that if we were to bid for it again, I think we would find it would be consistent with the, with the market.
Thank you very much. I was just more interested in making sure that the initial outset of the contract was open to multiple potential contractors to have the opportunity to have a fourfold increase in, in a contract over time. Thank you.
A member Epstein.
Yeah, thanks. I just wondered, I, following up on Member Grande, that does seem like a pretty substantial increase. And I'd like to know, I mean, has the, has the workload increased that much from what has been, what, what this vendor has been doing for the last five months? That it's so much higher in the next five months? And if so, why?
Yeah, the workload, the workload has been that for someone of this, of this assignment area, this is, this is
Sorry, I'm just gonna jump in if that's okay, because I appreciate the questions and I think they're very important to respond to. So a couple of things. One is that you know, I think we had entered into an agreement with the assumption that we were going to have certain staffing in place relative to the comptroller functions and the responsibilities that were associated on the accounts payable side of things, et cetera. And in fact, we've had, we've gone through two rounds of searches unsuccessfully to find a director of a comptroller. And so the extension of services is in anticipation of the degree of difficulty associated with finding the permanent staff member and making sure that in that time the activities that are responsible in that division in fact have the coverage. These are critical areas that we've needed to be responsive to, both in terms of our responsibilities from a compliance perspective as an institution, but also an increased number of work that we've had to prepare and do with response to requirements that we fulfilled in our response to. requirements that we fulfilled in our response to the state auditor and a series of recommendations associated with the state auditor. So that's a, it's a lengthy explanation of saying, you know, this sort of accounts for the hours that we anticipate going forward with the recognition that we can dial back the hours if we are in the fortunate position to have appointed some of the positions in the Fiscal Services Division through the, the, the open search that we have, both on the Director of Comptroller role as well as the Senior Accountant role.
So if you are able to, just, if you're able to hire some people more quickly than you expected, the amount that we expend on this contract could be.
That's right.
Correct.
If I may add one more piece of clarity, going back to trustee Grande's point. So the initial contract was at ninety thousand dollars, which was not competitively bid. It was within the exception. Anything that went above and beyond came back to the board. But I, I do want to point out a caveat that these are specialized services. So there is not a requirement in the code with respect to having these contracts be, be bid the way you would like them to be. But the initial contract, and I think Jolina, that was your question, whether or not that was competitively.
Properly entered into, yes.
And, and the answer to that is the initial ninety thousand dollar contract was not a competitively bid.
The, the first one was the seventy-five though, right? That's, 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 I think, I think that was the, the initial one that we were, that was the question.
The addendum was to increase the overall not to exceed amount. That was the first addendum, which was executed under the hundred thousand dollar threshold. Now we are coming to the board with the Second Amendment and the purpose of the Second Amendment is because we are in excess of the authority given to us by the board with respect to this contract. So that's where we are.
Got it.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. So I'm going to ask if there's any public comment on this item.
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve in a second?
Just Agüinaldo, I'll move.
Agüinaldo moves, can I get a second?
I'll second. Rawlings?
Rawlings, second. Would you call the roll, please?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. We are, did I ask for public comment on this?
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry. There was none. Thank you. So we're now going to move to our last agenda item for approval, which is four point three, which is the addendum to professional services agreement with V Chief. And I see that Marissa, is it Marissa? Marissa Bold, Chief of Program Operations, will be presenting on this item.
I thank you, President Haynes and members of the Board of Trustees. I would like to present you a professional services agreement with V Chief for your approval. V Chief has, Calbright has worked with V Chief over the past year and is seeking approval to enter into a contract for an additional year. V Chief was building on Member Grande's question. V Chief was selected to provide services for Calbright following a request for proposal or RFP process with the option to renew for an additional year upon board approval. This is the second year of that, of the second agreement continues the scope of work from the RFP and would provide important support and resources during a time that Ajita talked about in the beginning of accelerated growth and capacity building for the college. The services focus on high-level strategic operations work, helping the college develop new systems and processes and helping meet additional needs and mandates that have arisen for the college, such as through implementation of the strategic vision, compliance with the timelines and deliverables required by the state audit and important milestones for accreditation in the coming year. In addition, this contract will help us build capacity of Calbright employees to lead and implement the work going forward, decreasing the need for the support in future years. While V Chief's support and services are important now, as Calbright is rapidly scaling and building capacity and infrastructure and working to meet our internal and external timelines and expectations, it's not anticipated that V Chief's services will be needed on an ongoing basis beyond the startup and capacity building phase. And the funds for these services are paid from Calbright's one-time startup dollars. I am happy to go into more detail. We have had, I know the first time we brought this contract forward, we had the detailed conversation like the one with Brendan and talked about the work, but any question, so I won't rehash some of that, but I am happy to answer any questions and talk about anything. We appreciate the opportunity to prevent, to present this agreement for consideration. It is for one year and for a total value not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. Welcome, any questions?
Thank you. I have a hand up from Member Grande.
Thank you, Marissa. I was wondering, could you give us just maybe three or four bullet points on what the key milestones were from this first year's contract?
Sure, absolutely. Maybe thinking about the scope of work, which you probably see in front of you that's listed in those bullet points. I could share a few examples related to each of those. You know, in terms of project management, they have worked across learning and instruction, student services and success, workforce development, finance administration and strategic initiatives. As an example of the assisting, you know, on the finance projects as requested, they supported documentation of procurement manuals and training on a timeline, really accelerated timeline required by the state audit. And that is now overseen by our full-time procurement coordinator. So a good example of us bringing that internal. In terms of working with external consultants and maybe combining that with research, they have supported work with external partners such as CCRC and Cben and helping the Calbright team engage in the most strategic ways, manage meeting timelines and agendas, stakeholder feedback, research, tracking deliverables, stakeholder engagement and sort of maximizing the impact of that work. They're doing similar project management and tracking of our work with other research partners like UCI and with the post-secondary teaching for, with technology collaborative that Calbright is part of for that national work. I've got many others, but maybe, maybe that gives a few examples.
Are there any other questions from, from the board members?
I will just add one editorial comment too, is we're also in the process of increasing our staffing capacity internally in terms of project management support. So, you know, we hope to do that sometime in, you know, the first half of twenty twenty-two as well to, to add additional capacity on an ongoing basis that we know that we'll need in the future as well. So just to, just to mention that as well.
Thank you. Board member Epstein.
Yeah, thanks. I think that Member Grande and I are like a one-two punch today on these contracts. The, again, you know, this is a very big contract. And for work that I think arguably can be done by staff. And so I, I understand that the additional work that was required as a result of the audit and so forth. But again, is this a contract that if, if we develop the capacity to do some of these things more quickly, that, that the amount of money spent on this could be reduced? And, and the staff could take over a number of these tasks?
Yes, absolutely. We, we have hired two project managers. They are phenomenal. They do both happen to be on leave right now, but they will be back with us. And we are super excited for when they come back and super excited for them in this moment in their lives too. And also as we hire additional people, absolutely, this contract can flex up and down. We have had, I think, seven different people work with us over the course of this contract. We have four right now. That can go up, that can go down. Even sometimes on just a one-week notice or two-week notice as those needs fluctuate as well. And if it turns out that we have a less, less of a need, this is a not-to-exceed contract, absolutely that the dollar spent against it would come down as well.
Yeah, I think we should, on both of these contracts, I think we should have a kind of mid-year review about how it's going and, and, you know, if we've developed the capability internally to, to do some of this work so that we can reduce the amount that we are ultimately spending this year.
Yeah, we can happily report on that. And also, you know, we, we track the oversight in this contract very closely as, as a number of our other bigger ticket contracts. And so we're, we're happy to sort of report out on both the nature of the work, how the, how the contract is going, as well as sort of work remaining and what we're, progress we're making on the full-time staffing front.
Other board member questions? Don't see any other hands raised. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve this addendum to the contract in a second?
I'll move approval.
Grande moves.
I'll second.
Agüinaldo, I'll second.
I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give Hill the, the first on Tom.
You've been working way too hard, Tom. Get some rest. So we have Agüinaldo seconding this. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Hildegard Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. We're gonna move now to item five. This is information and reports. We have one, and that's the reports on contracts and purchases. And we have, again, Jeff Bell, I'm our Chief Financial Administrative Officer. This is pretty straightforward. Are there any items that you wish to highlight, Jeff, on this one?
No, Madam President, it's one eight, one hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred dollars, two, two contracts. And then nothing to highlight on the purchases.
Okay, well, given that, are there any questions from the board members? I see no hands raised and no flailing issues. And this is an information item. Thank you so much. So we're, we're almost toward the end.
Oh, President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Thank you. Oh, we do have a hand raise of one of our board members.
I, I took too much medication today. But the, the one question I had was on the, on the, on the second document where it said equipment. And then there was a kind of a bottom line number, but there was no explanation of what the equipment was. And all the other purchases, there was a, a list of who the vendor was and so forth. And there was, under equipment, there's this, this fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-seven cents, but no, no vendor for it. Oh, I'm sorry. I, 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 I see. I'm sorry. It was in twice. That, that, I see. Never mind.
You got it?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, all right. This is an information item. There, is there any public comment on it?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Okay, then we're gonna move on to item six, which is the constituency reports. Both of these were, Michael Stewart, who is our president of Calbright Academic Senate, Michael finds himself on an airplane and is unable to present to this, this group today. But Terry did send his remarks, which are short, in an email. So please feel free to, to review it. It's pretty straightforward. So now we are down to, is there, now we're down to public forum. So I need to find out if there's any presenters in public forum.
Yes, President Haynes, there are three. The first one is Alexander Moore.
Mr. Moore.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Moore and I am the Senior Labor Relations Representative for the California School Employees Association. I have been supporting Calbright classified staff over the past few months in their efforts to form a union. I want to point out, one of Calbright's greatest assets is its staff and faculty. In the months I have worked with the classified employees of Calbright, I have found them mission-driven and deeply concerned about how to best support California's adult learners. It is one of the reasons they have chosen to work here and a driving force behind their efforts to form a union. I think that's why Calbright's institutional response has been so disappointing to so many. Values like equity and partnership drive work at Calbright, yet when the classified staff asked for a seat at the table, leadership's response was underwhelming. When staff's union efforts went public, leadership spoke supportively of those efforts only to later take actions contradicting those words. So ultimately, I am here to ask you, the board, to align Calbright's words with Calbright's actions. On December eighth, Calbright denied recognition and opposed the inclusion of over half of all classified employees in their union. If we take management's position at face value, approximately fifty percent of all employees at Calbright, including faculty, are classified as either management or confidential. That is a one-to-one ratio of managers and confidential to regular staff. I know of no other institution of higher education in California with such a ratio. Likewise, if we were to take management's position at face value, no administrative or executive support employee would be permitted to form or join a union at Calbright, regardless of involvement in negotiations, labor or employee relations. Management may frame this opposition as purely a technicality, a necessary step in a bureaucratic process. But I ask you, the board, not to be fooled by this. A technicality would have been one or two positions, not over half of all employees at Calbright and not every administrative or executive support employee at the college. Ultimately, I hope this is a mistake. Perhaps management is unfamiliar with the definitions of management confidential employee in the era, the Educational Employment Relations Act. Maybe they confuse the confidential employee label with access to confidential information instead of involvement with labor relations and negotiations. Perhaps they are worried that as the college grows and its needs change, they won't be able to adjust positions as needed, even though that is the very purpose of negotiations. Whatever management's concerns, it does not justify their heavy-handed response filed with Purb and it does not justify a likely months-long delay in recognition of classified staff's union. So I ask you, the board, to intervene. Direct Calbright management to withdraw their opposition. Help align Calbright's words with Calbright's actions. Your classified staff is ready to get to the bargaining table and tackle the issues facing Calbright workers. So let's end the delays and start building a fruitful partnership in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. I should note here that while we take public, public comment during this time, the board typically does not respond to public comment. I just would say that as the president of, of the board, that this is a supportive board to ensure that both Calbright, the, the executive side as well as the employee side are going to follow the process. It will be transparent, hopefully, and, and the goal is for it to be expediated, expedited, I should say. And we look forward to there be, for the, the movement forward of CSCA as a represented body at Calbright. Can we go to the next public comment?
Yes, President Haynes, the next public comment is from CSCA Chapter fifty-three.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Karen Snow. I'm a classified staff member here at Calbright. I will be reading a letter written by the classified staff, the union members, to the board and the leadership. An open letter to the Calbright Board of Trustees. At the November fifteenth board meeting, Calbright President Ajita Menon told the board of the trust and the trustees that the administration was in the process of recognizing a collective bargaining unit of classified, Calbright's classified employees. Naturally, we interpret that to mean exactly what it said, that Calbright would recognize our union. On Thursday, December second, the representatives from the new Calbright Classified Staff Union, CSCA Chapter fifty-three, met with senior leaders in Calbright's administration. They told us they were eager to work with us and had a collaborative relationship based on mutual trust. The next day, their attorneys filed paperwork refusing to recognize our union and challenging the right of nearly half of our members to belong to it. We, the employees of Calbright, are distressed, disappointed and angry. We wish to negotiate in good faith. We want a collaborative relationship. We are passionate. We want a collaborative relationship. We are passionate about California, Calbright's mission here in California and know that we can better support our students when we are also supporting each other. We are invested in the administration's success. We believed what we were told and we believed what they told you. But the administration's acts, actions leave us wondering if it will be possible to work collaboratively. The path they're taking seems much more likely to lead to a climate of fear and conflict than one of mutual trust and support. Is Calbright more intent on busting our union than it is on supporting us as employees? We expected better. One of Calbright's goals for 2023 was laid out in its strategic vision is participatory governance. As Calbright employees, we were thrilled by the path to success and the values laid out in the strategic vision. Now we are left wondering if that path and those values were also empty words told to our faces, but not to Calbright's lawyers. We hope not. We know that there cannot be any participatory governance that excludes our right to organize and to speak truthfully about the issues affecting us. We can take the higher road than this. Calbright is doing important work for all of Californians. We should be lifting each other up as we do it. Let us have a relationship in which we say what we mean and mean what we say. Calbright's Board of Trustees can restore our faith and get us back on track by recognizing us as a union, one that is committed to Calbright's success. Sincerely, CSEA Chapter 53 Classified Staff Union. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last public comment is from Ariselli Cruz.
Ms. Cruz.
Great. Hello, Board President Haynes, President Menon, members of the Executive Committee. I'm Ariselli Cruz, Senior Marketing Manager for Calbright College. I'm concerned that our classified union, Calbright 53, has yet to be formally recognized. And I believe the delay is to be intentional as several of my colleagues, including my own role, are being challenged. I'm also concerned about employee turnover, continued underutilization of existing staff, as well as a lack of upscaling opportunities and professional development for staff while watching increased external contracts. I'm concerned we continue to lose talented colleagues with valuable institutional knowledge who don't feel that they have a voice. Please encourage, encourage leadership to recognize our union as soon as possible so we can recruit and start putting our leadership into place and engaging in collective bargaining, as is our right to organize. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment?
There is no other public comment, President Haynes.
All right, then, um, we have concluded all of the items on our agenda. So, um, we can now adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.